Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 20th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
Let the nation raise its flag in the United States of America and to be proud for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice, law.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Agenzio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Jaramillo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
And here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 6th.
So move. Madam Clerk, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to suspend rules. All in favor, all opposed? I'd like to please take up the Appointments Subcommittee Report. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had, I think it was six appointments tonight. There was four new appointments and two reappointments. And they were voted out favorably. Thank you. Okay, road call? Would like to take a road call? Ah, no, all together.
All together?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairwoman McKenna? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Absolutely.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Counselor Jaramillo, state your point.
Just for some of us that aren't in the Subcommittee on Appointments, I'd just like to congratulate all the candidates. And I know they're awesome and they've been doing a great job for the city, including some of them who are mentors of mine, former Counselor Steve Morbido, who got appointed to the DEI Department. So really appreciate you all and good luck.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I'm thrilled that they hired Chris Charamella up for this position. He has been doing such an amazing job. He is on-call 24/7. I drive him absolutely crazy, but he's always there, 100%. He gives 100% to the city and I'm really proud of you, Chris.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say congratulations to all three. Mr. President, all three that were appointed tonight. And I know they'll do a fabulous job. Thank you.
And Mr. Charamella, just remember to take your boots off when you come home, please. Thank you. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number three. Hearing called is ordered on a bond authorization for the new Rivera High School in the amount of $493,217,901.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Keefe, 44 Kilburn Street, Rivera, Mass. Mr. President, Honorable Counsel, Madam Clerk, tonight we are before you for the humble request for the city's largest bond authorization ever for the future of our Rivera High School and our entire Rivera education system for $493,217,901. Over the last four years, the counsel, former counselors, myself, have worked relentlessly to ensure that we made the best choice. Over the last 14 months, yourself, Mr. President, former President McKenna, and many of the honorable body here, and most recently over the last six months, this new council has done everything, turned over every stone, had hundreds of meetings, asked each question, and made sure that everyone will make a decision that they feel very comfortable with, knowing what the stake that we have in our community. And I just want to say thank you. It's been an unbelievable experience to work with yourself, Mr. President, former President McKenna, and of course, every, all, each 11 counselors. Whatever your decision is tonight, we respect, but I do humbly ask for your bond authorization. I have everyone from the entire school building committee team here to answer any questions. I know we have already turned over every stone and you have asked a number of questions, so you may not have any new ones, but we are here if you do need anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing. What I would ask is, we've been dealing with this for quite some time. If you have already spoken, maybe give some other people a chance to speak, but instead of coming up tonight, if you want to show or raise a hands, or if you just want to get to the vote tonight, but if anybody really feels like they need to come up and say something that has not been said yet, I welcome you to do so. Otherwise, we'll move on with the public hearing and get this vote done. Seeing and hearing none? Are there any opponents? Anybody not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I will close that side of the hearing. I would like to open it up to city counselors at this time. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Don't be fooled by my vote tonight. It has nothing to do with how I was treated last year by my friends, some who I've known since I was a kid. The nastiness, the meanness, and the threats. My sister said, "It's politics, Joanne." I said, "No, not for me. It was personal." Because of an extremely costly projection that I voted against last year wholeheartedly because of the lack of transparency and education we received as a council, it was my duty to put the city and our people first and protect this city from going into bankruptcy or a vote for a Proposition 2 and 1/2 to finance this school. The council and the city needed this year to look at how we are going to pay for the school. We received transparency and we were educated. We needed this time for the council to understand the numbers on what the city needs for finances and what we can afford. Plus, with the substantial increase the city is getting from the MSBA to help finance this project makes the school more foreseeable. I would like to say kudos to Mayor Patrick Keefe for bringing this council to the table and assuring us that the city can afford this new high school because of the growth this city is experiencing. I know that Mayor Keefe would not, was not sure, if he wasn't sure of this, he wouldn't put his career as mayor on the line. Thank you to CFO Rich Visque for going over the numbers and answering all our concerns and questions. What a difference a year makes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think that my counsel to my right, Counselor McKenna, has said really everything that I was going to say. I really do think we needed this extra time. It gave us the time to really sit back, take a look at things. But I promised the people of that neighborhood that we would sit back and do the right thing, and eventually that's what we did. And, you know, I believe the high school's going in the right place. Is this a sure, you know, is it scary? Absolutely. But, you know, we live, don't live in a perfect world, but our students need perfect education, and that's what we had to produce for them. So I'm in favor of this, and I hope the rest of the council is too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. For me, I wholeheartedly would like to see a new high school. However, the issues I have are cost, timing, and unknown risk factors. Specifically, I would have liked to have seen the cost of the new school scaled back in terms of bells and whistles so that costs were at a more manageable level, especially since history tells us projects always end up costing more than originally estimated. This proposal also comes at a time when we have two very important unknown risk factors: the successful and on-time completion of Suffolk Downs and a pending eminent domain lawsuit pertaining to the Wonderland site. Currently, we are witnessing an economic atmosphere where the need for commercial and retail space is on the decline. This is key because the viability of Suffolk Downs has a tremendous impact on our ability to fund the new high school. To illustrate this, we see that future revenue from all new growth throughout the city is estimated to be approximately $12 million as compared to the total amount of projected revenue from just one project, Suffolk Downs, which is expected at $43 million. Therefore, in an uncertain economic commercial atmosphere, we're heavily relying on the successfulness and the on-time completion of Suffolk Downs, keeping in mind that only a small percentage of one of the four phases has been complete and a commercial building has been put on pause. In addition, the pending eminent domain lawsuit also poses a risk which could increase cost. All of these factors have a tremendous impact on our ability to fund the new high school while increasing risk. With increased risk comes an increased probability that we will have to pursue other avenues of revenue to pay for this school, many of which were not welcomed when they were mentioned in Mr. Visque's 2023 presentation. For example, one possibility was a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, which will increase property taxes. And we've actually seen Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides and property tax increases in other towns when they built new schools, for instance, like Wakefield and Stonem. For me, the risk is too great and comes during an uncertain economic atmosphere where we already are seeing commercial development declining and will be putting all of our eggs into one basket by counting on the successful and on-time completion of one project, Suffolk Downs. I have heard from too many residents who are struggling financially, especially our seniors who are finding it very difficult to stay in their homes, and an increase in taxes or an increase in any other fee would be catastrophic for them. Lastly, I'm also concerned on how this will impact our ability to afford and pay for other things that the city will need, like roadwork, emergency services, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jaramillo?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this. My family and I immigrated to the United States 24 years ago. It'll be on June 7th. So if we can align the ribbon cutting for this on June 7th, five years from now, that'd be great. And why I bring that to the table is because many of us moved to the city of Rivera to give our kids an opportunity, a chance. This is a working-class city. I think you've heard it from me, you hear from me at every council meeting. We're not the Lexington or the Carlisle, the Concordes. We're Rivera. People here get up every morning and they take the train into Boston and they serve in our hospitals, among them my parents, both of whom were janitors and put me through school as janitors. But I would have never made it to college without the education that I got here in the Rivera Public Schools. And a building is not the education, and that's true, but I owe everything to this education system. The teachers, some of whom are here, some of whom I serve with on the city council, the students, the police officers, the firefighters, the community we've built around, and why Rivera is the crown jewel north of Boston today has everything to do with our education system. We owe it to our kids, to our future generations, to the working-class folks in this city who have decided to move here to give their kids a chance to build this high school. We owe it to them to build it in a timely manner. We owe it to them to build it with good, strong, paying jobs because those effects will ripple throughout our community. This is an investment in the future and the well-being, the long-term well-being of our city, something we cannot miss. If we hesitate even for a minute, we risk accreditation, we risk rising costs, we risk the opportunity of getting ahead of what will hopefully be lower interest rates in the next few years. So with that said, I just would like to again thank the people of Rivera for believing in our kids. It'll be a yes vote for me today, Mr. President, and I look forward to walking into that building and celebrating with the amazing educators that have, that have held our hand, who have been our confidants, our friends. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I won't be getting any applause tonight, and I wear that as a badge of honor because I'm not here for that. I'm here to protect the taxpayer. That's what I do. I won't be voting for this bond tonight because there's too many uncertainties. First of all, we took $1.2 billion off the tax roll. We swallowed that and we move forward. What are the uncertainties? Well, we got this financial presentation that was masterfully done by a terrific CFO. He's one of the best in the state. But what's underlying, you know, everybody said, "Well, how transparent it was." And it was very transparent. Unfortunately, the unknowns are what are the problem. The unknowns are the cost, the final cost of Wonderland, for the land. The unknowns are, it's, it's built on really what I call a house of cards. And if one of those cards falls apart, we're not going to be able to afford this bond. Yeah, we can if we go to a pay-to-throw trash in a, in a community's, what's that? Communities, you know, you know the one, but it's really a 3% tax in disguise. And, you know, the, like I said, the financial presentation was all there. The only thing that was different this time in the presentation was all the bad things were put at the end, like the pay-to-throw trash, like the only 4% raise in, in firing police that becomes a cut if, if we're at 6% inflation. These are the, these are the unknowns that are in there. It's, it's irresponsible for me to vote for this bond, and that's why I'm not going to do it. And, and like I said about the financials, it was masterfully presented, but if you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. It's all the, all the scary things are still in this presentation. We're, we're talking about barely getting by at certain times, and if something goes wrong, then, then the crap hits the fan. And this is the reality, and I always tell the truth up here. And some people don't like that, and that's okay. But I hear from the taxpayers, and I've never been more popular, and I can tell you that right now. And I'm not looking to be popular. And I'm not looking to be right because, God forbid, several years from now, people are going to say, "Zambudo, God rest his soul, he, he was right. We should have listened to him." That's what I'm hoping doesn't come true. But are you knocking on wood that I'm gonna, that I'm gonna die? Oh, okay. But all in all, you know, there's just too many unknowns here. And what are they? There can we afford this bond? We're saying, yeah, we can barely, by the presentation, we can barely meet these things if everything happens correctly, if Suffolk Downs comes in the way it's supposed to. And by the way, I promised my taxpayers a tax cut for Suffolk Downs because it was going to pay $47 million a year in real estate tax. And, and now I have to reneg on my promise because we, whatever money we get from there, we're going to use towards this debt service to pay for this high school. And the other uncertainty that doesn't have to do with the bond is the MIPA process. I don't believe the timeline. Now, I, I know everybody's been up here promising us that this timeline's going to go through. I don't. I've been involved in MIPA processes. I've been involved in construction all my life. I do not believe that's a true timeline. So that's my reason that I'll be voting no tonight on this debt service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair. Thank you. For the record, there was three people. Just want to let you know. Thank you, everyone, for the ability to speak from the chair. Mr. Mayor, I want to say likewise. It's been really great working with you. For me, this was a willingness to take a risk. We all know this is a risk. We all know this amount of money is a huge risk. And we've all, on this council, been given all the facts, and all that differs is our opinion on those facts. Some of us think we can do this and some of us might not. I don't know. I don't ask my, my counselors' questions. I don't do that. But I do want to commend every single person on this council, especially the newcomers who have been thrown to the wolves, right into the, right into the fire essentially with this, this high school vote. And there has been tons of information thrown at us, and you've all done a great job, and I, I appreciate it, and I have loved working with every single one of you on this. Mr. Mayor, it's been nice to come to work with my guard down the last few months. Showing up here after last year, my guard was up every single day I walked in this building, and I don't feel that anymore. Thank you. And I also want to say for me, this is about me trusting the ability of the administration that they're going to do everything in their power to make sure that we find the right ways without burdening the taxpayers to pay for this school. And my trust has been renewed in the administration. They did not have that last year. I will be voting yes tonight. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve a bond authorization in the amount of $493,217,901 for the new Rivera High School? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Cogliandro?
Let's build a high school. Yes.
Yes, the bond authorization has been approved.
Mr. President?
Counselor Novoselsky?
Suspension of rules for reconsideration, hoping it will not prevail.
All in favor, all opposed? Recorded as no. Counselor Zambudo?
Congratulations, Mayor Keefe.
Mr. President? Mr. Mayor?
If I can answer, Ms. Counselor McKenna, thank you very much, Counselor McKenna. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, you make me so proud tonight, and this is, this is an unbelievable moment for the city of Rivera. Thank you.
Don't cry.
Now, do you all want to stay to talk about the senior citizen property tax work-off?
We're, we're.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess.
We're back to regular business.
Back to the regular order of business.
Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending the senior citizen property tax work off abatement.
This is a public hearing. Going to open the floor to proponents. Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, we will open it to opponents. Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, any city councilors wishing to speak? My recommendation would be to table this and keep it in the City Council instead of Legislative Affairs due to the amount of time we actually have for subcommittees this year. So unless there's any objection, this will be tabled till the next meeting.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered on an amendment to the zoning map of the City of Revere as follows. An ordinance further amending the zoning map of the City of Revere relative to the Ted District. Section 1, Title 17 of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere in the zoning map provided by Section 1712020 of said title, is hereby amended by changing the zoning district of the following parcels from GB to Ted. Parcel 10-188A3-1, 2, 3, and 4.
This is a public hearing. We'll begin with proponents. Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, any opponents? Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, any city councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Garino Sawaya.
The proposed zoning change from the GB to the Ted will align more closely with the intent of the city's zoning ordinances. The properties are currently used as a repair garage, which is not allowed in the GB district. Repair garages are allowable use in the Ted district. Additionally, the new property owner would like to exercise a Class II license on the property, which is allowable use in the Ted district. I look forward to discussing this at the zoning meeting further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I don't mind making changes in zoning. I'd like to see maps of what it looks like, exactly where these are. So when they go in committee, I hope that somebody can provide a map and show us where these locations are. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And obviously, I agree with my colleague to the right. We should have a map in front of us and know what we're doing. But I look forward to this in zoning, and I am probably going to be a proponent of it. But everybody should know exactly what we're doing, and we should see it physically. And so I look forward to this being in my committee zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Refer to zoning Subcommittee on June 3rd.
Mr. President, let the record reflect that Counselor Zambudo and Novoselfsky agreed on something, please.
You said, "Let the record reflect that Counselor Zambudo and Novoselfsky agreed on something this evening."
Listen, Counselor Novoselfsky and I have been up here for in the 20-something years, and we've agreed on a lot of things, not just this one thing. Thank you.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called as ordered on a request by the City Planner for adoption of a zoning ordinance further amending the floodplain overlay district of the City of Revere.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Tom Skrowski, 281 Broadway. I'm here tonight to present revisions to our floodplain ordinance overlay. And this basically is just to conform with the newly drawn flood insurance rate maps, which will become effective July 3rd. And in addition to that, when they become effective through coordination with the state's MEO office and their flood insurance coordination team, we had to update our ordinance to basically align with the Massachusetts model bylaw for floodplain ordinances. This is all really to make sure we are still in conformance with the National Flood Insurance Program, so we can continue to participate in that. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Seeing and hearing none, are there any opponents? Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, any city councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, we'd like to see some kind of map of what we're looking at here, and what the old one is and what the new one's going to be.
So this, in this case, we won't, I wouldn't actually refer you to our zoning map or any of those overlays. This would be references made to the firms that the National Flood Insurance Program puts together, which are a little bit more convoluted and difficult to read. I'm just offering that as a caveat when I do send it over. But we do have the map changes, and the biggest changes have to do with the area in and around Suffolk Downs. But basically, they took a series of amendments from 2000 up to today and consolidated them into one big change. So it'll be a bit of a messy map when I send it out between now and when it goes to Subcommittee. I'm happy to answer, or Frank Strangie, any technical questions you might have.
Thank you, Counselor. Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, will this change any of our residents to land in a zone where they may need flood insurance or anything like that?
The only changes, I think, almost without exception, are actually to the benefit of Revere homeowners. So these were all what are called letters of map amendment, where homeowner, or in the case of HYM, a large property owner, puts together an appeal essentially to FEMA that states, you know, with new data, they have reason to believe that they're not in the flood zone, or that they're in a lesser flood zone or a lesser flood elevation. So all these, I think, and if there is an exception, I'll bring it up at the last meeting, but I believe exclusively they are in favor of landowners and property owners in the city.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other councilors? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, does this coincide with MassDOT?
In what sense?
Well, I mean, I know there's going to be changes in Beauchamp with the flood zones and, you know, road configurations, and I just want to know if it coincides with MassDOT's plan in the future.
In terms of Bennington Street or?
Bennington Street, Crescent Ave, Beauchamp Corner.
It shouldn't have any implications on roadway work or Mastod projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counsel, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Tom, does this coincide with regular homeowners' insurance? Because I live in the Pines, and I don't have flood insurance. But I know that the homeowners' insurance now went up because of the area that we live in by like 80% this year, and it's happened to everyone in the neighborhood.
So I think that a lot of the flood insurance premiums and just insurance premiums we're seeing across the board are due to changes in the industry and, you know, I guess a greater risk profile, you know, in the area in and around your ward. We've seen a lot more flooding as of late, right? And I think that has led to increased projections of risk. But at least in terms of what these flood maps represent, there aren't any changes that would include any homeowners that aren't already in the flood zone. So I don't think anything that will be taking place here that goes effective July 3rd will have any additional negative impacts. I think any of those premium increases we're seeing are more reflective of changes in the market.
Nope. They stated that it was because of the water table that it's coming up and everything. But I'm wondering if it's the same, and that's why we're seeing the difference in the flood insurance as well.
We, so I did come across a few complaints from homeowners along the beach, actually condo owners specifically, that had mentioned that in recent years, their property was added to the flood zone, and it wasn't there previously. And I can only speak for the one instance where I did a little bit of research working with the state office that manages this program. And I was told that it was always in the zone, and nothing had changed in recent years that impacted that. I think it was just a change in the premium of the flood insurance itself.
I know that there has been an increase in Oak Island as well, and they used now Romney Marsh as part of that area that they're raising the rates on.
I'd be happy to take any particular properties, and we can perhaps connect in events in the next meeting, so I could have an informed opinion on each of the parcels in question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, you stated that properties that are within a flood zone right now, well, in other words, we're not adding, you don't think that we're adding any properties to those flood zones. However, there are degrees within a flood zone, correct? So is that changing at all? In other words, somebody which might be in like a, I don't know how they categorize them, but say a Level A, would they be switching to a Level B?
Right. So that's great questions. And it goes from, you know, AO all the way to AE is sort of the most restrictive, and then you have the V zones, which are the ones right along the coastline. I don't believe in any instance, again, if there's exceptions, I'll bring it up at the last meeting, where there's any sort of level of severity increase for homeowners here. But again, I could be mistaken, and I'll make sure to confirm that for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be referred to zoning Subcommittee on June 3rd.
Next up is unfinished business. Calendar item number seven. An ordinance relative to Appendix Table 3: Salaries of the Revised Ordnances of the City of Revere, also known as the Parity Salary Ordinance.
Mr. President.
Counselor Silvestri.
I'd like to offer the following amendment. Section H, where it says, "Increases in perpetuity is amended by continuing the sentence after heron and inserting the following language," listed in Section F of Table 3, mayor and city council and legislative branch employees. So what this would do was remove us from voting on our salaries each and every year, and it will also give the remaining on that list, they'd have to come before us to get an automatic raise. They're not going to get the automatic 3.75 that was in the ordinance, and the rest of, would get whatever the union votes on.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? On a second reading as amended? I'm sorry, we have to vote on the amendment first, everyone. Please take a roll call on the amendment.
On Counselor Silvestri's amendment as read into the record, Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Harramio?
Present.
Voting present. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The amendment is approved.
On a second reading as amended? On a third and final reading as amended? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending Appendix Table 3: The Revised Ordnances of the City of Revere? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Carramio?
Yes.
Voting yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Calendar item number eight is the Committee of the Whole Subcommittee Report on a motion presented by Counselors McKenna and Kelly that the City Council request Tom O'Brien of HYM to appear before the City Council to provide a construction progress update on Suffolk Downs.
Permission to speak from the, who? Actually, I can defer this to you, Counselor McKenna. That's okay. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Kelly and I asked for Tom O'Brien to appear last meeting. He gave, he came, and he gave us a preview on what's going down, what's going on down Suffolk Downs, and, you know, we, there was rumors, and he addressed the rumors. So I was okay with that. If Counselor Kelly wants to speak, that's fine.
This will be placed on file.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report. This was calendar item number nine. Motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the City Council hold a preliminary discussion on potential zoning amendments related to the implementation and expansion of medical and adult-use marijuana in the City of Revere.
Counselor Silvestri.
I said enough that night, and I think it's time we move forward here in the city, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Carramio.
Thank you. I think the cannabis industry in our city deserves some TLC. Alright, THC. Little bit of both. Don't have to drug test me, baby. You already know I'm smoking weed. Before any further incrimination... It's legal in the state of Massachusetts, Mr. President.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Placed on file.
The Appointments Subcommittee Report was already taken up. Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report. Calendar item number 13. An ordinance providing for interpretation services for public meetings and public documents.
Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had one issue before us, an ordinance providing for interpretation services for public meetings. We had a presentation by Ms. Inzarella. We decided to leave this in committee until Counselor Carramio and Ms. Inzarella can discuss different amendments and what have you to this, so we're just leaving it in committee. Thank you.
Alright, this will remain in Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number 17. We're onto motions. Motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor be requested to instruct the DPW to repave and resurface Pines Road in the interest of public safety. The road has been destroyed due to saltwater, sand, and clamshells.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18. Motion presented by Counselors Kelly and Janino that the mayor be requested to rename Liberty Park to Lieutenant John Jones Memorial Park in honor of his career as one of the first black police officers for the City of Somerville. His service to the United States of America as an Air Force veteran and lifelong resident of North Revere. Further, that the DPW, in conjunction with the Open Space and Environmental Planner, be requested to install appropriate signage bearing the name of the park and to schedule a dedication ceremony upon completion of the park revitalization project.
Counselor Janino.
I just want to say, when I heard about the park up in North Revere and the location of it, and the request being made to name it after Lieutenant Jones, it's a no-brainer. Lieutenant Jones was born in North Revere, passed away in North Revere. He was North Revere. The Jones family is out of North Revere. He was an Air Force veteran, served in the Air Force honorably, Somerville police officer, became a lieutenant in Somerville, moved forward, was involved with youth sports, the kids, coach, parent. His kids, I've watched his kids grow up in North Revere, went to school with his cousins, nephews, brothers, you know, it's just a no-brainer. I drive by this park once a day. It's located across from his house, where he was rebuilt, where his family grew up. And it's all positive.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
I just want to echo all of the things that Counselor Janino just said, and I think this would just be a wonderful tribute, and looking forward to getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Janino, Counselor Kelly, you guys just beat me to the punch. I jumped on this, growing up with both of his sons and his family, the impact that he had on my generation and the youth growing up. And he took so many others in like they were his own. So to have a park that's continued to live a legacy of himself, and his son, who is a Cambridge cop and works with a youth program similar to the one that Joe Singer runs here in Revere, it just shows that the family service and the legacy in this park is so deserving. I couldn't think of a better place or a better name for this park, and great motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would have loved to have been included in this motion, because JJ and I go way back. We grew up playing travel basketball together, me and his brother Jason. His dad was a great man. He was a staple in North Revere and in the city, and he was a close friend to my dad's. And my dad helped dedicate a memorial back to Mr. Jones in 2005, so this is a great tribute 20 years later, and I'm very happy to support this in honor of Mr. Jones and the Jones family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion. I wish I was included in it, too. I had most of the Jones children in school and in high school, and know them all, and I think this is wonderful. Thank you.
If there's no objection from Counselor Kelly or Counselor Janino, would it be okay to add the entire council?
I say we add everyone as a whole on this motion.
Fair enough.
He deserves it from all of us.
Counselor Carramio.
Didn't get to meet Mr. Jones, but I did get to meet his son, who's, you know, I think I spoke a little earlier during the high school vote about the influence that the people in our community have had on me. And his son is, has been a staple in mentorship in my life, and I really appreciate him. So to your father, big toes to here, and I hope this passes.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good. Good evening. My name is JJ Jones, 5 Richard Street, up in North Revere. Kind of getting a little emotional. Thank you, guys, for all your kind words. Lieutenant Jones was born in North Revere, passed away in North Revere. He was North Revere. The Jones family is out of North Revere. He was an Air Force veteran, served in the Air Force honorably, Somerville police officer, became a lieutenant in Somerville, moved forward, was involved with youth sports, did the kids coach, parent. His kids, I've watched his kids grow up in North Revere, went to school with his cousins, nephews, brothers, you know. It's just a no-brainer. I drive by this park once a day. It's located across from his house where he was rebuilt, where his family grew up. And it's all positive.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
I just want to echo all of the things that Counselor Janino just said, and I think this would just be a wonderful tribute, and looking forward to getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Janino, Counselor Kelly, you guys just beat me to the punch. I jumped on this, growing up with both of his sons and his family, the impact that he had on my generation and the youth growing up. And he took so many others in like they were his own. So to have a park that's continued to live a legacy of himself and his son, who is a Cambridge Corp. and works with a youth program similar to the one that Joe Singer runs here in Revere, it just shows that the family service and the legacy in this park is so deserving. I couldn't think of a better place or a better name for this park, and great motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would have loved to have been included in this motion because J.J. and I go way back. We grew up playing travel basketball together, me and his brother Jason. His dad was a great man. He was a staple in North Revere and in the city, and he was a close friend to my dad's. My dad helped dedicate a memorial back to Mr. Jones in 2005, so this is a great tribute 20 years later, and I'm very happy to support this in honor of Mr. Jones and the Jones family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion. I wish I was included in it, too. I had most of the Jones children in school and in high school and know them all, and I think this is wonderful. Thank you.
If there's no objection from Counselor Kelly or Counselor Janino, would it be okay to add the entire council?
I say we add everyone as a whole on this motion.
Fair enough.
He deserves it from all of us.
Counselor Jaramillo.
Didn't get to meet Mr. Jones, but I did get to meet his son, who's, you know, I think I spoke a little earlier during the High School vote about the influence that the people in our community have had on me. And his son is, has been a staple in mentorship in my life, and I really appreciate him. So to your father, big toes to here, and I hope this passes.
Good evening, sir. Name and address to the record, please.
Good. Good evening. My name is J.J. Jones, 5 Richard Street, up in North Revere. Kind of getting a little emotional. Thank you guys for all your kind words. Truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Specifically, I wanted to thank Councilors Janino and Kelly for putting this together, as well as Silvestri and Haas for jumping on and showing their support. Also, Clerk Melnick and Charlie Giuffrida reached out and they helped as well. You guys said everything, pretty much most of what I wanted to say, but my father was born in the woods, steps away from the park, back in 1943. It was a massive blizzard, January 26th of 1943. He died just, you know, a few steps away from it as well and the family home that he built and built for us and raised his family in. During his life, he was an Air Force veteran. He was in the Air Force as a midair refuger, spending time over in Vietnam, came back from there, became one of the first black police officers in the city of Somerville, which was an amazing accomplishment, you know, back in the '60s and '70s. That was a big deal. Spent 32 years, passed away in 2005 as lieutenant. And as far as being a dad and what he kind of meant to the city, he was a fixture at every single game or practice or city event, and there literally wasn't a kid in the city who didn't know of Mr. Jones. He was just there, not only as a parent, but also as a coach. And our family, you know, some of you guys alluded to it, is the roots run wide and deep up in North Revere. Over 100 years, there have been over 100 family members that have, you know, were born and sort of raised up in that neighborhood. Some have come, some have gone, but back when it was mostly woods and mountains, you know, before all the new houses and construction and developments, you know, that was our home and that park was the center of it all. You know, I learned to ride my bike right there. I taught my kids how to ride their bike right there. I got my first broken finger on the spinning wheel of death that it used to be there back in the day. It just, to me, wouldn't make sense to name it after anybody else. He was an amazing man and deserves to be remembered, so thank you all. Appreciate it.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Jaramillo that the City Council order to a public hearing, an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere, establishing a program to divert waste from landfills and incinerators to offset waste disposal costs.
Counselor Jaramillo.
Mr. President, thank you. The motion speaks for itself, and we're actually having robust conversations with other colleagues in the council who wanted to sign on, including, if we could be noted, Counselor Guarino Sawaya would like to be added to the motion for this composting ordinance. And further, that we motion to move this into the Committee on Climate for further deliberations as we're working with some community partners, local or environmental groups who would like to give us some more feedback on this and have a more robust conversation. Prior to the, yeah, prior to the order of the public hearing. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Silvestri.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to say I support this motion. I received 30 to 40 emails asking me to support it from residents that are already either composting or want to start, so I think it's an idea, a great one, and we should try it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also in favor of this. It's a great motion. A lot of other cities and towns have already entered into something like this. It's a great way of getting trash out of the waste stream, helps the environment, so I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to say I'm in favor of this. I've had a number of residents reach out via email and texts, like Counselor Silvestri, so I think this is a great, great thing for the city to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. Yes, I have also received some calls and some emails regarding this, and I would be in full favor of it, and thanks for bringing this motion. I think it's great.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? This will be referred to the Climate, Workforce, and Sustainability Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councilors Haas, McKenna, and Guarino Sawaya that the mayor request the city policy writer and analyst in conjunction with the Building Department to investigate requirements for utility companies or any company that conducts roadwork or construction to provide notification of said work to the City Council and impacted residents. Notification shall be given at least two weeks in advance, shall provide a timeline for completion, and shall describe any impacts the residents may experience, including but not limited to lane closures, traffic congestion, parking bans, and overnight noise. This proposed notification would be applicable for all scheduled non-emergency work.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think this is the type of motion that's probably been in the works for years, not from me, by myself, but this stemmed from a couple of weeks back when myself, Counselor McKenna, and Counselor Guarino Sawaya all received different messages from residents concerning traffic in certain areas, road closures in certain areas, parking bans in one instance, and noise that was going on over, construction that was going on overnight. And none of these residents were alerted, none of these residents were given a timeline, and I'd like to see if this is something we can do through the city policy writer and analysts with, along with the Building Department, and see if we can get a notice for residents just so they can plan accordingly whether their travel's going to be impacted or, you know, even their sleep schedule. So I think this is something that the residents deserve and something that the city should look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So about three weeks ago, I got a couple of calls from residents that live on Revere Beach Parkway, which is, that's where we're talking about. And I had called the city, and no one knew about what was going on on Revere Beach Parkway, but they were working from 10:00 until whatever in the AM. And so I asked the, one of the residents to take a picture of the construction truck that was working and found out that it was Mass DOT. Mass DOT did not even give them flyers to tell them that they were going to be working at night. And the reason why they're working at night is because they don't want to cause a traffic jam, but they're impacting people's quality of life. People can't sleep because of the jackhammers, the roadwork, and everything. Anyways, and so, and then Counselor Haas called and asked if anybody knew what was going on, and I knew a little bit about it because I had called, I called Mass DOT to find out who was the permitting person that got, the permitting construction company. Anyways, so this is all related to this motion that we deserve to get, and I'm sure other cities get notified, but residents should get notified, and it shouldn't be the city to notify. If construction work is being done, utility work is being done, then it should be the utility companies that give the notices to the abudders, and so people aren't impacted. I know on Winthrop Ave, Winthrop Ave where I live, it's been being constructed over a year and a half now, and there are times when they don't even let us know that we have to move our cars because it's not, we're not notified, and police are going into houses and waking up residents at 7:00 to move their car. So we have to do better, and I think the city needs to demand that we get respect from these construction company, companies, utility companies. And going forward, I mean, this is going to be going on for 20 years because Suffolk Downs is going to be building for seven, for 20 years, so things are going to, you know, it's going to continue, so we need to put a stop on this now and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guarino Sawaya.
Well, Counselor McKenna was saying is, I got stuck also in that traffic that Monday night, that last council meeting. I went down Broadway and then took a left to go down Revere Beach Parkway, and I got stuck in that traffic for 45 minutes trying to get home, and I had no idea what was going on. And then another incident that happened a couple of weeks ago, I actually had to call Counselor, Council President Cogliandro, is they put signs up in front of my mom's house. I was at my mother's house, and all of a sudden they put signs, and trucks are showing up to do work, and no resident was notified. And I couldn't even get to get her to go into, to take her to the doctors because there was trucks out there, and no one was informed. So they not only need to notify us as counselors, they need to notify all the abudders when they are doing any work, and it has to be in a timely fashion. It has to be at least a couple of weeks early. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got to say, the work on the Parkway at night has been going on for the last three summers, and the jackhammering starts about 10:00 PM, and it doesn't stop till about 4:30, 5:00 AM. It is pretty out of control, but I do think, I'm not sure how much we're going to get in a response to this. I think we asked too many times and without a response, so I'm just hoping we can get one, and I look forward to one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I do think that we have the opportunity to deny work in the city. So I know that when I wanted a new roadway for Winthrop Ave after the construction was over, I was denied, and Donnie Caramello came in and said, "We'll stop the project right now if we don't get what we want," and we got it. We got $575,000 to put a new roadway on Winthrop Ave. So we can stop if, the council can stop the construction companies from coming in our city and working. So, I mean, if we have to do that, we have to do that, like National Grid with the poles, you know? So that's just my take on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I've been through all this before, and I feel for everybody. For the Revere projects, we can do this. Unfortunately, Revere Beach Parkway is a state project, and what I would recommend also is that we contact our state delegation to let them know to contact MassDOT to enforce and reinforce notifications to everybody, you know, even if they told just the mayor's office, so they could send us a notice to their office. That would suffice, but just let somebody know what's going on. And I don't even, I don't know if our D P W knows what's going on, because some of the work looks like it's either water work or sewer work, and I don't even know what it's for, you know, where it goes to, what it's connected to. So I think we ought to include the state delegation on notification on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I did hear newly-appointed D P W superintendent say that one of his goals was to increase communication, so I'm hoping that we can get some more respect from some state agencies that really don't show us any. Good evening, sir. Name and address to the record, please.
Ed Terrill, 70 Swoole Street, here again. I'd like to make the recommendation that City Hall really needs an Intranet, because then the notifications that the fire and police get can be seamlessly pushed to anybody. Because I hear about the 10:00 blockages on Revere Parkway, and if you sit in the firehouse, it comes up on their little board up there. So this information really doesn't have an avenue to be shared, so I would really, really think about putting together an Intranet, you know, an Intranet for the City Hall, and then communications, everything will be so seamless. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mrs. Skorowski.
Hi, it's me again. It's good to see both this petition and the last one on composting, reflecting things that the administration's working on right now, and look forward to collaborating with you on the composting work and some of the efforts we're doing there, but also I've heard a lot of this as well, and we're looking to put together a traffic working group of traffic and transportation officials in the city where we're, to your point, having a stronger feedback loop, sharing information, sharing updates, not just local projects, but the state and the utility ones as well, to make sure we have that communication going out to the community. So it's a great petition. We look forward to working on this with you as well.
Thank you, sir. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Guarino Sawaya that the mayor request the city planner to draft a zoning ordinance prohibiting short-term rental use in single-family zoning districts.
Counselor Guarino Sawaya.
All right. This all stems from me having a serious issue in the Point of Pines. There are a ton of Airbnbs popping up everywhere, and the city are aware of some of them, but what's happening is they're closed down, but then they reopen, and they're using them all over again. The short-term rental use in the Pines neighborhood where single-family homes are being purchased as non-primary residents and are being used as not, are being used as commercial by people who don't live here. The ordinance states that you have to be owner-occupied, but it's not like that. They can be snowbirds, and they can go away for six months, and then they come back, and it's considered owner-occupied, so things have to change. Parking's being affected, that we are 24/7 parking in the Point of Pines, and what's happening is these Airbnbers that are coming in are taking over parking spots and residents can't park. So I'm having an issue with that as well. So Zack is, of course, on there working. There's a lot that's happening with these people. They're doing things that they're not supposed to be doing, and I really need to see if we can change the ordinance so we don't have this issue with single-family housing, homes, single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Full disclosure, my son works in the short-term rental office, so I am in no way opposed to Counselor Guarino Sawaya's motion, but I would like, before we move forward on anything, I would like City Solicitor Paul Capisi to appear before us. There's been a lot of litigation across the Commonwealth about short-term rental, and sometimes the cities prevail, sometimes the homeowners prevail. Since the Short-Term Rental Office has been in existence, 1,100 listings were existed at the time of inception, and now there's about 115. I'd hate to pass anything that someone challenges in court, and then we find ourselves more or less shooting ourselves in the foot. I, like I said, I'm in no way opposed to Counselor Guarino's motion. There's also some gray areas that exist in the ordinance that affect the whole city, and I'd like to discuss those with Mr. Capisi to see if we could tighten those restrictions up. So if we could maybe table this until Counselor, excuse me, City Solicitor Capisi comes up before us, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if we could put, include rooming houses in this ordinance, because, I mean, we're not addressing the rooming houses out, that's going on in the city. And I had my agenda delivered by a Revere police officer Thursday night, and I said, "How are things going?" And he says, "You know, we're addressing these rooming houses. They're a big problem in the city." And I says, "What's going on?" He said, "Well, there's one on a certain street that has 20 rooms, and they have numbers on each door, and we have problems all the time with them." And I said, "I have one next door to me, and nothing's being done about it." So I was just wondering if we could include the rooming houses in this ordinance with the Airbnb. And just to-- And just to answer councillor Garino Sawaya's, just to give you insight, Beechmont has the most Airbnbs in the city. So we're inundated because we're close to the water, just like you, but we're close to the water. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a good motion, but I agree with councillor Argenzio. Before I think we move and solidify anything, I'd like to hear from the city solicitor. I do know the program that we've implemented. Nick and Vinnie do an amazing job. And if an apartment is registered through Airbnb, I know we have a system that verifies if it's a proper registration. So if they're, if they're being removed and then re-signing up, I think our system should flag them so they might not be renting them legally through Airbnb. So we might have to figure a way to get on top of that, but thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Kelly.
Along the lines of what councillor Argenzio was saying, I have some concerns as to the legal aspects of this as well and would like to, like the opportunity to have Paul Capizzi come in so that we can answer questions and find out if there are any legal implications regarding this or surrounding this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor McKenna.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. So I was one of the makers of this motion of the ordinance probably about four years ago when it first started or five years ago when it first started. And, you know, I, it's just, I think everybody's doing a great job. I just think, we were supposed to get some software that shows where people are advertising. I think it was like, do we have it? Oh, okay. I end this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I just wanna say, I'm in contact with Vincent Argenzio quite a bit. We have a lot of Airbnbs in Ward Three. He's on his game, man. He does a great job. And it's crazy because some of these illegal ones that you were talking about councillor, they continue operating even without a permit and they're paying this $300 a day fine that we have. It's, you know, and they're, exactly, they're making more than that a day, so it's crazy. Maybe we should up it to 500. I mean, how do we stop it? This could be a potential start. I do agree with the legality surrounding it if it's legal to do. In regards to the rooming house, I know we just changed it last October. I think we really need to start cracking down on enforcement of those. And if we need to make additional changes to make it more difficult to exist in Revere as a rooming house, then we should do that. That's my two cents. Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Can I make a motion to amend it and add rooming houses to this?
Do we wanna put these in the same ordinance? I don't think, we have two separate ordinances. I don't think we should mix.
Two separate? Excuse me?
The rooming house ordinance was already passed last year.
Yeah, we passed it October sixteenth. What's the will of the council? This sounds like a lot of discussion needs to happen, Legislative Affairs potentially, since we're looking at more at the legalities behind it. Councillor, how do you feel?
I'm fine.
All right. This will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Pursuant to Rule Twenty-three of the City Council Rules of Order, the following motions are reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number twenty-two, motion presented by councillor McKenna, that the mayor request the appropriate department to install metal detectors at the main door and install new locks on the rear doors of the City Council chamber for the purpose of protecting the city council and the public in attendance at meetings.
Councillor McKenna, you can...
I'm good with this. As long as we have, like tonight, we had police presence, as long as we have police presence, I'm good with that. But I would really like to have these doors in back of us get new locks because anybody could come through here. And I'm just thinking about safety and security. So these locks don't even, you can't even lock them.
Well, you can either put this back into committee, we could take a vote on it tonight, or you can place it on file, whatever your will is.
I'd like to get the doors fixed if, so I don't know where we would put this in committee. Can I amend it?
Amend the motion and send it back to subcommittee.
Yes. Yeah, take the metal detectors out and just make sure the doors in the back of us have sufficient locks.
Mr. President?
Councillor?
Couldn't we just make a motion to change the locks and not go to a subcommittee?
Yeah.
It's too...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just call the DPW.
Yeah.
So then are we, are we placing this one on file? And we'll file that motion for the next meeting?
Yes.
Can we not amend this motion to just have it include that and strike everything else?
Okay, I'll ask one more time. What is the will of the council?
Motion to amend, strike the current language and add that we place locks on the, on the rear doors of the council chamber.
Thank you.
Simple enough. On the motion as amended. So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by councillors Kelly and Janino that the may be requested to take by eminent domain Lot 131 at Seventy-One Sherman Street as a matter of public safety.
Councillor Kelly?
I would like this motion referred back to subcommittee. It was a joint committee, actually, Legislative Affairs and zoning in Ways and Means, I'm sorry. Zoning in Ways and Means.
Permission to speak from the chair? I honestly don't think that the council should be handling this business. It is with the solicitor's office currently. There are things in motion with plot plans and surveyors involved. I really don't think this is business that we should be discussing or attempting to handle at this point. I don't know how the council feels.
Mr. President?
Councillor Zamburu?
I happen to agree with you wholeheartedly. I know that they're actively working on this right now and I think to do any more here would hinder the progress that they're making. So let's get the figures and find out what the solution is from them, if we can always reject it if we're not happy with it. Thank you.
Councillor Kelly?
My only concern would be how do we get, because I haven't had any updates from anyone regarding any progress or movement on this, so how would we be getting those updates or progress or information?
Point of information, we can ask the solicitor and the mayor's office to give us an update.
Well, then can I make a motion for an update from the solicitor?
Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. The young woman from Seventy-One Sherman Street, Nabea, is here tonight and I think she would like to say a few words regarding this. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nabea Ljivar, Seventy-One Sherman Street. Seventy-One Sherman Street, Nabea Ljivar. I'd just like to bring to everybody's knowledge that this lot, Seventy-One Sherman Street, is attached to my home. The reason that this motion was brought up was because of my neighbor on the other side. She is actually impeaching on the street as well. She has put down plants on the street which is now, is currently Sherman Street, like the little shephlet street, the little side street. So she has her plants, which she keeps extending. My fence, when I bought the home in 2017 or 2019, is, hasn't changed, but she keeps impeaching and making the street smaller. So obviously, I am in close communication with the solicitor's office to figure out what we're coming up with a solution. But I think the motion here for eminent domain is not because of public safety. The neighbor wants an SUV, which she's made aware to me, and she's having difficulty, she doesn't want to park it in her driveway, she wants to park it in her garage. So that's why she wanted to bring it up, that it was a safety issue. But I actually had a house fire at Seventy-One Sherman Street and the, you know, the safety vehicles were able to get in and out completely safely. I am working with the city to try to figure out what the situation is, but I just want you to open up that if you do bring this motion, it's going to open up a lot of neighbors to be like upsetting or thinking that they can take people's property because they just can by eminent domain. I mean, I bought this lot. It's still part of my property. It's all enclosed, fenced in, just like my deed requires. I just want you to know that like where, if you go down the street, you can see where the plants are. Those are part of the street which she has now planted plants on. My fence hasn't changed since I bought it. Just wanted to...
Okay, if I might.
Councillor?
This is, this is in the solicitor's office right now and the other person isn't here to speak to this. And there are, obviously, I'm not sure you, when you bought the property, that they disclosed, fully disclosed to you what the, what the situation was, that the purchase of the land had stipulations to it. I'm not gonna get into it here. I just wanted, I just wanna put that on the table and that we're not gonna negotiate this here tonight. We gave it to the city solicitor to work out a situation that you should both be happy with and that's what we're hoping for here.
Yeah, I mean, if, I just wanna make it very clear. If this is an eminent domain, it's because the neighbor is complaining and this is why it's becoming an eminent domain.
I get, I get where you're coming from. Thank you.
So if I may, I really think the best course of action here is to place this motion on file and we can send an email as a council to the city solicitor to get an update on the case. I don't know how councillor Kelly feels about that.
That would, I would be in agreement with that, Mr. President.
Thank you very much councillor. Place on file. You wanna, you wanna go ahead councillor?
Yes, I'd like to place a verbal motion on the floor that we do receive, that the city council requests an update from the city solicitor regarding the matter of Emily Sosha, Seventy-One Sherman Street, MAP twenty-nine block four thirty-three C, parcel zero, parcel six. Thank you.
Like Emily Sosha doesn't own that street. The lot is owned by me. I just want to make that very clear, that people, I don't understand what people believe, but that lot is owned by...
We're not here to make decisions on what happens legally, ma'am. My goal tonight was to make sure that we didn't have a say in what happened because we shouldn't.
Yeah, like I feel like everybody's saying, like, "I know Emily, I get it."
At this point, as a council, we're just trying to get information so that we can properly give information if we're asked about it, that's all.
Mr. President?
Councillor Haas?
Thank you. I will say that Emily spoke at the first meeting and this is the first time Nabea has been able to express her side of the story, so it's nice to hear both sides. Thank you.
Absolutely. On councillor Kelly's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-four, motion presented by councillor Kelly that the city council order to a public hearing, an ordinance requiring the publication of certain records of the police department.
Councillor Kelly, what is your will?
I would like this referred back to subcommittee.
Any opposition? This will be referred back to public safety.
Mr. President, this wasn't in public safety, it was in Health and Human Services.
I take that back. This is going to Health and Human Services.
Mr. President?
Yes?
A moment of personal privilege?
State your point, councillor.
Thank you. This message is from the Revere Senior Council Board. Be it known that we, the members of the Revere Senior Council Board, publicly and unequivocally pledge our support for the people and the government of the State of Israel. At this moment, they are in their struggle for survival against the forces of Hamas who launched their brutal inhumane attack against peaceful civilian families in their homes and hamlets. We ask for your support and your prayers as you see fit in this effort. It may help to reflect on your own family's history, your own ancestry from somewhere along the line. There were strangers who gave them a chance and helped them in some small way to survive and prosper. In this time of great peril and even greater suffering for those victims who so brutally attacked, please join us and stand on the correct side of history. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I thank the senior council for that, you know, solution and their comments on this. I would also like a point of personal privilege on my own, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This month is, was put together by Mayor Keefe at the beginning of the month, was declared Jewish Heritage Month for the month of May. And I just want to recognize two events that have come about and gone. But last Monday, since we didn't meet and I couldn't say my piece on this, the Jewish people recognize the holiday of Yom HaZikaron. This is a memorial day for fallen soldiers of the wars of Israel and victims of actions of terrorism. It is Israel's official Remembrance Day enacted into law in nineteen sixty-three. While Yom HaZikaron has been traditionally declared to fallen soldiers, commemoration has also been extended to civilian victims of terrorism, including Hamas. This day is equal to our Memorial Day and we want to remember all those that have put their lives on the line. Also, last Tuesday was Israeli Independence Day. This day commemorates the Declaration of Independence of Israel, which happened on May fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight. Israelis observe Yom HaZikaron to commemorate the Israeli Declaration of Independence, which was proclaimed by Israeli Prime Minister David Ben-Gurion. The Declaration of Establishment of the State of Israel expresses the declaration to be by virtue of our natural and historic right and on the basis of the resolution of the United Nations General Assembly. The words of Prime Minister Ben-Gurion declare that the establishment of a Jewish state in Israel to be known as the State of Israel. This is equal to, again, the independence of the United States of America, our July Fourth. While I am pleased to bring these events to everybody's attention, the negative of all this, I am not pleased with our Revere Human Rights Commission for not recognizing these events at its last meeting. They did recognize many other religious holidays and events and it was my understanding that the Revere HRC was to bring out diversity and equity for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are difficult topics that we're discussing and people have opinions on both sides. But I'll tell you, as someone that has seen the dark side of war, the Israeli people have been, have been taken by terrorists at one point and they fought in back. But at some point, there has to be rules of engagement in war. And I believe that we can still support the Israeli people, we can still support the Palestinian people and not support Hamas or the military actions that are being taken place in those countries. Because there are being war crimes that are happening on both sides and I think we have to identify that. If we're gonna call the elephant in the room, I think we have to. Although Israel is, has its right to defend itself, as I said, there are Geneva Conventions, there are war, there are rules of engagement that at some times, I think the Israeli government is toeing the line. So I think we can stand for both and honor the Israeli people through their time and their suffrage, but at the same time, showing the respect for what's happening in a dark time right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, everyone. There is no further business. This is one for the books tonight. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.